All right. Brent, make sure to turn your microphone so it's down in front of you.
It's on right here.
You have to wait it.
We're good.
I got a lesson on microphones at the last meeting. Good evening. We're going to call the regular meeting of the Foxborough School Committee for February 27th, 2023 to order. First item, as always, is open public comment. Those that have been submitted via the community inbox, as always, have been distributed to the full committee, and so we thank people for their submissions. Do we have any folks here for the in-person version of open public comment? Seeing none, we shall move on. So the next item on the agenda is approval of minutes for January 24th. Do any committee members have any comments, questions, concerns, clarifications?
I do not. I would move to accept the minutes from January 24th.
Ow, leave that.
Brett, make sure to turn your microphone so it's down in front of you.
It's on right now.
Give it to Wade.
We're good.
I got a lesson on microphones at the last meeting. Good evening. We're going to call the regular meeting of the Foxborough School Committee for February 27th, 2023 to order. First item, as always, is open public comment. Those that have been submitted via the community inbox, as always, have been distributed to the full committee, and so we thank people for their submissions. Do we have any folks here for the in-person version of open public comment? Seeing none, we shall move on. So the next item on the agenda is approval of minutes for January 24th. Do any committee members have any comments, questions, concerns, clarifications?
I do not. I would move to accept the minutes from January 24th.
Excellent.
I wasn't here.
I'll second then.
Thank you. No, that's fine. I appreciate it. All in favor of passing the minutes? Three against? And any abstaining?
I'm abstaining.
That's fine. So we have three. It passes, and those will be posted for the public for the January 24th meeting. Three zero one. Next up, superintendent's update. Dr. Berdows, hi.
All right. So one update is that we completed two focus groups for the Vision of the Graduate, and those were well-attended last Wednesday and then last evening. And we had parents and community members and students, and I'll just have to say, the students, they are so articulate in talking about what they think is important for school now and when they leave high school and graduate. So it was just, it was great. I mean, our faculty and staff who participated too, really good discussions in talking about what they want to see as important for transferable skills, knowledge, understanding, dispositions for our students when they graduate, and again, it being a vision, not just for the high school, but really as we talk about the whole continuum from pre-K all the way to grade 12. So thank you to all those that participated. The next steps in that will be taking it kind of on a roadshow, as Mr. Donovan has talked about, and all of the staff meetings in the buildings and working on that as we continue to formulate that and put it into a document that will then be shared as we go towards our next step, which is the decennial visit, but that's not until the fall of 2024.
Is Niasse's expectation that you'll have a draft of that compiled by that decennial visit?
Well, we just, they'll come to, they'll come and visit based on the work we're doing from the collaborative conference and from our own self-study. So there's like these different steps along the way, and we've completed a couple of those already. We've just received the document back from the collaborative conference. It's a very lengthy document, so at this point, the high school is looking at what's in there. We're looking for any kind of edits, whether it's typos, based on what we've said, are the goals that we feel are important, what they've stated, and we'll be sharing that. But we need to get the final. It's just a draft right now, and we'll send that back to them. And then, once we have that, we'll have, that is an agenda item if we move forward. It is National School Counselors Week, and I think that people can really understand the critical part that they play for our students. We have such dedicated and committed staff, so really, thank you to all of our school counselors. This is the week that it's nationally designated, but we thank them each and every day. But again, it is this week. We have the Random Acts of Kindness Day, which is next week, so it kind of coincides all together. Yes. So other reminders, one is our meeting on Wednesday night with the AdCom is going to have to be rescheduled, so that will not take place on Wednesday. We have program of studies that's taking place at the high school this week. We have the Winter Fest, Winter Jazz Fest concert coming up on Thursday, and String Fest next week, so still lots of concerts, lots of sports that are going on with Hawks, and very busy. Even on our cold days, they did not miss a beat. We had, the track team, they're running through the high school. They did not stop. They couldn't be outside with the cold, but they were running up and down the halls, so they were still getting their workouts in. So very dedicated athletes, musicians, and scholars. The other reminder that I wanted to mention, which I mentioned at the last meeting, was the upcoming presentation on February 15th, which is The Secret Lives of Teens and Tweens, and that's in partnership with the Safe Coalition. So you'll be able to go into the media center and see like a mock bedroom setup and be able to see if you're able to point out what is hidden in plain sight. And the second part of that will be directly following that with John Matalman, as far as minding your mind, and that's really talking about working and helping and supporting our teens and tweens when it comes to mental health, and really discuss how you can be a caring adult in supporting, you know, those really formative years from a social, emotional, mental health stance. No school coming up. February vacation is almost upon us, coming up the 20th through the 24th. Elementary students will tell you tomorrow's the 100th day of school, so that's really important.
I love that.
Other than that, that's pretty much the update, so kind of brief.
I was going to ask, and this is mostly just from other updates, in terms of just a general sense, is have you seen, and have your nurses seen, the most recent spate of illnesses cycling through the schools and how that's been in terms of flu?
I did not check specifically on that, but at the same time, I've not heard. So that's, you know, good news.
It is.
When you're hearing about large absences, so I've not heard that since our last meeting. So I think it's, we have, in a conversation I did have with Jen Rosenberg last week, we are starting to see kind of the flu part go away.
Good, good. Well, we'll keep the most recent yuck on the north side of town. Thanks, I appreciate it. Any other questions or follow-ups? Lovely. Thank you, Dr. Berdows. All right, up next, proposed 2023-2024 FHS program of studies.
So Mr. Donovan is not able to be with us this evening, but we have Ms. Akacha, who's from our art department. She is the K-12 art department head, and so she's going to speak to us about some of the proposed changes, which are pretty minor, but at the same time, they come with a really important rationale behind them.
Thank you, Dr. Berdows, and thank you, school committee members. So the art department has put in a proposal for the change to the 2023-2024 school year program of studies. The department is seeking to split the full year Sculpture and Pottery II course into two separate semester-long course offerings. These changes are being proposed based on the survey feedback from students, which was gathered as part of our 2022 art curriculum review that we did. The rationale for this, students and teachers have noted in the curriculum review that increased enrollment in Sculpture and Pottery II classes has created limited access to the student pottery wheel, something that we also noted in the curriculum review. The classroom currently only has 10 wheels. By splitting the courses, Foxborough High School will be able to provide students the opportunity to develop better and focus on their craft in a specific subject or media aligned with the studio habits of mind and the mass visual arts standards. Further, because of many of our students joined Pottery and Sculpture II without previously taking a sculpture course or pottery course, our teachers are noticing a growing skills gap between students, and this design would eliminate this barrier. So we're looking to split it into two separate courses. Are there any questions that I can answer?
My only question is clerical.
Yep.
So the title of the memo is Change for Studies for 2022-2023.
So it should be 2023-2024.
Okay, because that's what it says in the first sentence of it, okay.
Had you, when it was a full-year course before, would they naturally be split into sections, or were they kind of woven throughout?
They were woven throughout, so it would be half a year teaching one, half a year teaching the other. So it was a combined course. So this allows more accessibility for the students and also more teacher support. So before, the teacher was having to help the students on the wheel and then help the students doing sculpture, and now they're separated.
That's nice. I mean, I just, for my standpoint, it seems like a common sense change, especially to get the data to back it up.
Absolutely. And this course made sense when we originally set it this way, because the enrollment was smaller and we didn't have the AP 3D, but now that we have AP 3D and the enrollment's going up, we're seeing a need to split them by the mediums.
That's a sign of success. That's good. Well, congratulations on coming up with a proposal for it. Any other questions?
I just had a question on pottery wheels. So, I mean, is 10 enough? Do we need more? Do we have space for more than 10?
We currently don't have space for more than 10. It's something that we definitely, we put in the curriculum review, and we've gotten a couple extra, but yeah.
Yeah, okay. Because when, I saw the thing about the wheels, I was thinking, well, should we just get more wheels? You know, so that was just a question I had.
It's still a fine question to ask, though.
Oh, yeah. If there's a limitation, that's kind of what it was presented as, a limitation, so. But I remember the room, and it is set up, and so there is only so much room to put wheels in.
Nice.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the proposed change to the art department program of studies for the 2023-2024 school year as presented.
I second.
Awesome. All those in favor? Nice. And that passes. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck with the courses. I'm excited to see how they go. Lovely. All right, next up, the superintendent's mid-year cycle review. Dr. Berdows.
All right. So as you are very well aware, one of your three functions is the valuation of myself, and that is the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's five-step cycle. So we are at the fourth step at this point, so just as a reminder for anyone that might be listening, I know you're very well aware of those steps. It's looking at the self-assessment in the beginning, that's that first step. The second one is the goal development and coming up with the plan and how to meet those goals. Then, what we do all year long, all of us, in our goals, we're implementing that. And that fourth of that fifth step cycle is just a mid-cycle check-in. It's just a check-in on how I'm doing with the goals that I had set forward, that you had proved at the beginning of the school year. It's something I do with administrators as well, check-in. But one of the things that was instituted here a number of years ago, back when Debbie Spinelli was the superintendent, was to add a component. It's not the Department of Education's component, it's Foxborough's, which is to report out on three questions that you've asked, and that is, the first one, what am I really proud of? The second one, what am I working really hard on? And then that third one, what are some of, or what's my biggest challenge at this point? So I'll start with that, because when I think about what I'm really proud of, there's so much to be proud of in Foxborough, but what is at the forefront of my mind right now? Because it is daily, and that is our administrative team. As we've talked about, we have 50% of our administrators, so our administrative team is 14 people in total, and seven are new to Foxborough, although one of them's not new to Foxborough, just new to the role. When we think about those administrators, I could not be more proud of the individuals that have chosen to come to Foxborough, the thorough process that we have in bringing those individuals here, and the talent and the skill set. Dr. Burrows is one of them, as far as part of that team. We have people that are committed to students, first of all. They are committed to building relationships and getting to know their staff and their students, and really happy to be in Foxborough. I've continued to hear such wonderful feedback from parents, from staff, from students about the new administrators in their building, which, and that's unsolicited. It's just coming out, because people just have such positive things to say. You know that we have a very thorough hiring process with stakeholders from many different areas that are part of that. You've been part of that as well, and it really does pay off. The questions that they ask, they push our thinking. Sometimes it's just asking why we do certain things a certain way, because it's Foxborough and they're coming from different districts, but it causes you to stop and to think about, well, why we do things a certain way, because we're really proud of that, or maybe it's something that we want to think more about as a thought partner. So I know that I personally learned from our new administrators that are here. We also have many new staff. I'm very proud of the hiring of our teachers and our staff as well, but just to target, because I have a daily, you know, interaction with all of our administrators every day. So I just, I really am proud of what they bring to Foxborough, their backgrounds, their talents. We're very fortunate, and their staff and their buildings are very fortunate. It intersects with where I'm working hard and where I'm proud. I think that's what I've found each year in answering these questions, because it's, you're proud of the work that you're doing, but it's also hard work when you think about the time and the effort that goes into making sure that I'm supporting our administrators the best that I can, reflecting on my own leadership and leading through them and their buildings, and am I going to be able to meet all of their needs where they're new? Some of the questions, you have to remember, they don't know what they don't know. And although public education is public education, it's different. The supports that we have and the staff and having historical background is important, and then sometimes asking questions that, honestly, when you've had somebody that's been in the role 20 years and a question's asked, some of those things are on autopilot. So it takes, it takes more time to kind of think back to, well, what is the answer there? And again, wanting to make sure that they're comfortable and acclimated and happy in their new homes. So that is something that I'm working hard on, to be able to be the instructional leader for the district, but also to be a thought partner for them, to think about what leadership styles are. It goes back to our administrative retreat in August, and even thinking about an activity that we participated in in Compass Points, and thinking about your leadership style and understanding the perspective that everyone brings to the table, and that some people are going to be those that jump right in, they want to just act, where others are going to be more methodical and think about the plans behind, and thinking about how you have that balance. And what came out of that particular activity is to see, and that was not just the administrative team, that was our full leadership, when we think about our department heads and our team facilitators and those folks, the balance across the four points in the room, and to think about how it adds value to have someone from all of those different perspectives. So I think that's really important in my role, to support them and to bring those different perspectives to the table. Things such as book study, we're reading Simon Sinek's Leaders Eat Last. It's important, when you have that many new people to a team, that we had a really strong team before, but again, when you have a new team working together for the greater good of the schools and the district as a whole. Other work is making sure that we're keeping our focus on the plan for success and the goals that we've set out there, really taking an active lead in co-chairing our Diversity, Equity, Inclusion Committee, working with that group to develop questions, to be able to have focus groups, starting off with students in fourth grade. Those are taking place now between each of the schools, but at the elementary level, it's fourth graders, and it's asking questions for those that volunteered, first of all, and then those students that volunteered, getting permission from parents, that they can participate in those focus groups. And we have like nine questions, and it's about a sense of belonging. Do you feel that we have an inclusive school? Do you feel that sense of belonging? And asking different questions of them to get their voice at the table, and that's going to help to see, are we providing an equitable school experience for students? So we had so many students at the middle school that volunteered. We first thought we would have a group of fifth and sixth grade together, and then seventh and eighth, and we're dividing that by grade level. So it's really exciting. Dr. Burrows and I have asked those questions of the superintendent student advisory council. Nathan is one of those students, and hearing their voice to those same questions, they were really instrumental for us in that. And kind of piloting some of the questions, when we asked, Nathan, if you remember, when we asked about, what does equity mean to you? Do you remember what some of your peers asked the question on?
Some people like didn't even know what the word meant, so we had to like clarify which interpretation of equity you were looking for, and then like make questions based around that.
So, I mean, it was really important. I mean, the way you're asking questions and what you're looking for is really important. So they helped us formulate that, and then Mr. Donovan and the staff members that are on that committee, they're going out and getting more feedback from other students for that. So we'll take that as a committee, look at that, and to see where are the areas that will help inform our goals as we go forward. The Vision of a Graduate, doing that work, working with the co-chairs, working with Mr. Donovan, and then with the administrative team, to have that vision be K-12, that's, again, important work through those focus groups. And then that last part, as far as challenges that I face, it's challenging to continue to fill positions that we have open. We've talked about positions that are educational assistants or teaching positions, or when we have teachers that are going out on leave, like maternity leaves, those kinds of things, and having long-term substitute teachers in those positions. We want to make sure that we're doing the best that we can to meet the needs of our students in those leaves. And then we still, we have transportation vacancies. So it's not anything that's unique to Foxborough, but those are challenges that we still face in filling those positions. My question, before moving on to do the check-in on the goals, would be for the five of you, and do those questions, just in the future, make sense to you in continuing to go about this process and asking those? Is it something that you would want to do differently? So that's really kind of my question for you.
I feel good about the process that you have in place.
I feel good about the process that you have in place. I feel like it's a great temperature check, that, you know, mid-review. You discuss the challenges, you just discuss the successes, and you discuss how you get to the successes. So I think it hits, for me, it hits all the important, you know, notes that we need to hit together. It's good. It's good to highlight, I think.
I like, I mean, I, I like having the breakdown of those questions when compared against the, the grid and the, you know, the, the, the standards and the goals. I think it's a nice, it's a nice way to unearth them and still explore them. And I appreciate the format, because I think it's an authentic way to bring, to bring your work to life. And I don't just mean you, I mean, anybody who goes through that process. I think, I think, I think the process is very valuable. And it, to me, it brings it clear. And I think having, having both side by side, I think is helpful for me to, to understand it, because you bring it into a narrative form while still hitting the actual standards and focusing in on the, the letter of the goals as, as they were stated. So I've become so used to this that I would find myself, I don't feel I'd be as prepared to talk about the work of you and your office without having both lenses. So I appreciate it.
All right, shall I go on to the goals, just to do the check-in?
Yes.
Okay, so the professional practices, as everyone is aware, but I'll just repeat it for summary sake, is that we all have a professional practice goal, a student learning goal. And if you're an administrator, either a school or a district, in my case, goal, and then if there's any other goals. So the four goals that you had approved earlier this year, my professional practice, it goes back to what I was just talking about being most proud of. And that goal is providing the targeted and differentiated support to the administrators, whether they are, it's their first administrator role, whether they're new to Foxborough, and how I can best support them in their role. Because a principal or an assistant principal, they work really hard to do what they can so the teachers can do what they need to do for the students in their classroom. And that's an important, critical part that I play in doing what I can so I can support the principals, so they can then support those within their buildings. So I mentioned the leadership retreat and the book study being a couple of examples. I have, in addition to pop-ins all the time at schools, I have formal scheduled visits every month with every principal, and that provides an opportunity for them, if they have a list of questions, they know I'm going to be there on a certain date, so they can kind of hold that. We talk about goals that they have, do walkthroughs, observations with students and teachers in the classroom if they have questions of something that they want to ask, or something they're just really proud of and they want to share. So those formal visits give an opportunity to kind of say, okay, this is dedicated uninterrupted time. They're a minimum of a half-day, if not two, in some cases, depending on what's going on, a full day in each of the schools. But that's in addition to my many visits every day. So that's, that's the best part, being in the buildings and the classrooms.
If you don't mind my asking, what, what's your preference when you, when you're doing a pop-in?
What's my preference?
Like, yeah, do you have a route that you like to take, or is it, is it, I mean, a...
Sometimes it's based on schedule. If I had a meeting somewhere else, then it'll just be hitting that particular school. A lot of times, if there's an activity, like for instance, we've got concerts going on at the Borough on Friday of this week, so I'm going, I want to go pop in on those. If there's any other events, sometimes it's a teacher that might say, come visit, I've got this going on.
Cool.
So it, it really is, it varies widely.
Nice.
But a lot of times too, if I'm meeting with someone individually, like with a teacher, I'll go to them instead of them coming to me, because it gives me another reason just to get out into the buildings.
That's nice.
So, being that I don't have an office right now, with some, some water that came in, it makes it much easier to go to them.
It does.
But that's all good. So, and then I think too, as we're doing this process with myself, again, I have, for those that I evaluate, when we think about the administrators, their mid-cycle reviews.
Right.
So, and I ask them the same questions that I've reported out to you on during those visits. And, you know, what are they really working on? What are they proud of? And what's challenging them? And it's just a really good conversation to kind of do a kind of a dipstick of kind of the temperature and how things are going, and if they're struggling in a particular area, or just kind of a problem of practice. So that's something that I really, I, I hold that sacred as far as on, on my calendar. And if there's, for some reason, either one of us need to reschedule, we always reschedule it. It's not a matter of, it's not going to happen
Right.
this month. The second goal there, as far as student learning, is one that has continued from last year. As we've talked about many times, it's a, it's a multi-year goal, because there's a lot as we implement MTSS, the Multi-Tierred System of Support, and what comes with that work and providing an inclusive environment for students and ensuring equity. And that goes back to our Culture and Climate Survey Presentation here in the fall, and really dissecting that. But that's also then taking that, and with each of the principals, looking at what is the data that came out for their school? What did it come out for them as a school leader? Formulating, in some cases, additional surveys that they're wanting to send out for their, to their staff to follow up on maybe some of the information that came from that. So it, that's not just one and done. That is a survey that continues to be revisited as far as the results and the information. And then when we ask other questions, well, let's go back. Let's see what we had asked and what that, the results were. Like, for instance, when we looked at the social-emotional learning and the diversity, equity, inclusion sections that we had added. And that helped inform the questions with the focus groups, as an example, taking that to our committee. Let's go back and look at what we asked, let's look at what the results were. How can we gain some qualitative data in a different perspective, in a different method, that can help add to that information that we had? The walkthroughs, the observations, looking and seeing the fabulous things that our teachers are doing, and how they're working with the other special educators in the room, or the service providers. When you walk into a classroom and you see these different groups, and sometimes you can't even spot where the teacher is, because they're down with a group. When I'm thinking about some of the elementary examples, it's just, you really see it taking shape, and you see the benefit that you supporting the budget for that and the difference that it makes in the classroom. But again, it's a multi-year process in order to, to get there, as we continue to work towards inclusive environments, but the co-teaching expansion there. The third goal, district improvement, monitoring and public reporting on our Plan for Success. I think that one, we're very well aware of from the presentations that are here. But I think the other thing, and you definitely recognized it, was the presentation with the principals and their school improvement plans, and that alignment, and being much more cohesive. So that was working closely with the principals as they work with their school councils. And how does that have that vertical piece? But what does it look like still when, particularly when you have three elementary schools? The bigger goals, but you still have some autonomy within each of those schools. And then how does that translate when we think about transitioning to middle school and high school? But that was something I know you recognized, and something we felt as an administrative team that was really helpful, that alignment with the plan. Obviously, we've talked a lot in the last number of meetings on budget, and how that is impacted through all of the Plan for Success, and how that translates within those action plans. Talked a little bit about the focus groups already. The fourth goal, in reviewing all aspects of staffing and efficiencies across operations and departments, to ensure that our budget is one that is effectively addressing the needs of our students, that we've talked about as well, being that we have so many positions that have been grant-funded, and really doing an analysis of what's most important to meet the students' needs, from the mental health aspects, and being able to retain those positions, like social worker. In special education, the expansion with the co-teaching, but at the same time, where we've reduced by six and a half, our budget's reduced by six and a half positions. And all of the dates that are listed that you're well aware of, because you've participated in those, from subcommittee to school committee to the AdCom that would have been tomorrow night, that will be rescheduled. So in all of those goals, I would say I've made really good progress, significant progress in areas, and will look forward to reporting out at the end of the school year, and whether they are attained or not.
Thank you. Questions, comments, follow-ups, or any points of clarification for Dr. Berros? Well, as is also past practice too, if you have any, obviously, reach out to Dr. Berros directly, because she's always good to meet with us on any of these points. So thank you so much, Dr. Berros, for being so characteristically thorough and clear in this document. It's, it's very helpful.
And the only, the, the last thing that I'll just add is, these are my goals that I report on, but I couldn't accomplish any of these if it weren't for the other administrators and the teachers and the staff of what they're doing every day. I, I work to lead through others, but I, these are, these are not accomplished individually. It, it is because it's the collective work of all of us.
Here, here.
Thank you.
Well, they wouldn't be very good goals either if it was only through you, right? So, yeah, no, that's something I've noticed is a hallmark of your leadership style, so I appreciate it. All right, well then, moving forward. Thank you again, Dr. Berros, for being so thorough. Next item on the agenda is approval of the 2023-2024 school calendar, which we had discussed in a prior meeting, and I believe all of us had had a chance to review. Are there any other lingering comments or questions, or is any new information come to light? Not that I expect any...
I think a couple of things. One of the things that, the discussion that you had at the last meeting, and it was a question that Richard had asked on the last day for seniors versus the last day for exams. And in the committee, it seemed as though it was asking, why have two dates? And that it really is going back to the last day of exams. So in talking with Mr. Donovan, it really, that's, as what you had suggested is what is most important, and just to have the last day of exams for seniors, so there's no confusion of when, if they're going on vacations, they're actually out of school.
Right.
And before graduation, if you will. And we did put on the back of the calendar the information that if your child is absent, reminder, have it handy, how to report a student's absence.
That's cool.
One question I have, just from a conceptual standpoint, is seniors' last day of exams, once that's set, does that slide if we have cancellation days because of snow days and so forth? That's sort of set in stone at that point.
Yes, that's just the last one. That's why seniors hope for snow days.
Both seniors and graduation, right?
Yes.
Once we set the last day for seniors and graduation, those are set.
Yes.
Nonrespectful of snow days.
Nice.
That's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure.
No, thank you for the
It's a sliding scale.
The feedback and taking the feedback, too.
I like to make assumptions.
Yeah.
Well, barring any other questions or comments on the calendar, this is an action item, folks, that we do have to approve, so.
This isn't necessarily about the calendar.
What is it?
But itself. But for cancellations and school cancellations, was there ever any kind of procedure where there would be a rolling update to the calendar? Let's say we have snow days and things like that.
We just have where it's listed, the, the last date. So like, for instance, if, if I'm hiring someone, it might say here that the last date of school is the 14th.
Right.
Yeah.
But I'm reminding them not to plan any vacations until after the 24th, because by state law, we have to build that in. There's principal updates, I think, to answer your question. Sometimes it, like, for instance, if we had had snow days at this point in time.
Yeah.
They would do reminders in their weekly or, you know, bi-weekly updates as a reminder, and particularly as we get closer to the end of the school year, is when those reminders...
What, what do you mean? So they'll, they'll give a reminder that the school is, you know, the last day is now changed to X, Y, and Z?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So that happens at the school level, not necessarily big picture?
Correct.
The calendar is set, and that's it. And then, okay, the snow days are tacked on at the end. Okay.
So at this point in time, our date for our current calendar is what is marked.
Perfect. I just wonder, I...
I'm not saying anything more. I'm just, I'm not going to...
Sounds good.
That's the current date at this point.
Right.
Okay, I just, I, that was my only question about...
They do, because families ask. You're, you're, I think you're right on target. They're going to ask. So if, if we get closer to the end, if we started to update now, when you're still in the middle of winter, then it would be more confusing?
Yeah, yep.
So, can I just ask a question? Because maybe, this is one of those questions that you see all the time on, you know, the social media, where people are trying to make plans, and they're like, what's the last day? Is there any issue with on the website, just having not on the actual district calendar itself, but kind of somewhere where it's like, currently, this is what the last day is?
My hesitation, I don't think that it would be hard to do that. But my hesitation would be, if it didn't get updated right away, and somebody saw that, at least this way, they're seeing, here's the last day, here's the last day with dates. If they have a question, then, because they're wanting to plan, and they could ask at that point. I would, I would hate to put it there, and then it didn't get updated, and somebody said, well, I looked at the calendar, and this was the last day.
Understood.
But if we can get past, if we can get into spring...
Even spring, I mean, we, you never know. I mean, knock on wood, you never know.
And I remember the April Fool's blizzard, so...
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the proposed 2023-2024 school calendar as presented.
I'll second.
All in favor? Approved, 500. Thank you, as ever, for consulting all the people to put this together, from students to members to admin.
That's cool.
Lovely. It's nice to have that done. Next agenda item is continuation from something we discussed last meeting. It's the unexpired term fulfillment for Southeast Regional School Committee, that Foxborough is, it's, it's our task between this board and the Board of Selectmen to appoint a member for the remainder of Mr. Stephen Union's term, which runs through, it's the next year and a half of, of his term. So a half of a full three-year term. And I, and this is information only, but I was going to, I'm going to propose to the school committee members that in order to get more voices in that process, because we do have, and thank you to Dr. Berros, who put this out to all, all the community. We have had four folks step forward with interest, which I'm delighted about. And I think I've reached out to all but one, and so I'm still waiting to get in touch with one. But wanting to spread the responsibility amongst more in the committee here, I was gonna suggest that we appoint a subcommittee to have conversation, well, to do two things, develop criteria, and also have conversations with, with all of those folks who have put their names forward. And I mentioned this to the Board of Selectmen as well. So, just so we could not just run it only through me. I would prefer to have more hands in the pot. And after talking to MASC today, that was their, that was their recommendation as well. So...
Fantastic idea.
So if anybody is interested in serving on that subcommittee, we would, we would want to do all of our work between now and our next meeting. And it, we would be able to still meet remotely to, to facilitate having more access to people's schedule. So I would ask that you reach out to Janet or me directly, if that's something you're interested in doing. And I've asked members of the Board of Selectmen to do the same.
So when is the next, I'm sorry, my calendar's not in front of me. So it's March? March is the next meeting?
March 7, right?
Yep.
Okay, so we want to, and, and we would need to have two open meetings between now and March 7th.
Two posted, yep.
Right, so one, well, two posted meetings, thank you. One, to, for the subcommittee to meet and decide on a criteria, and second, for the people whose names have been submitted to get questions answered. people whose names have been submitted, to get questions answered and just present themselves to that subcommittee.
Correct.
I'd like to volunteer to be a part of the subcommittee, please.
Thanks, Ms. Ladani. So if there are, I mean, also, again, this is information only tonight, but if there's, if there's any comments or anything on the process, please speak now, or you can also...
I'm sorry, just one more point of clarification. So then, the goal, the plan would be on the 7th, at that school committee meeting, that subcommittee would present.
Recommendation.
To, to the school committee, and then that recommendation would, assuming that gets approved by the school committee, that recommendation would then go to the Board of Selectmen for their next meeting.
Correct. If, however, if there, if the subcommittee has Board of Selectmen representation on it, then the recommendation will go out to both bodies at the same time.
Okay.
So.
And if have, I'm sorry.
Not yet. We don't, we don't yet have, we don't, and this is, we don't yet have a member of the Board of Selectmen secured.
Okay, okay. So that end of the process, we're not sure about yet, but that's okay.
Yeah, but the, the goal would be for that subcommittee to put together, put forth a recommendation.
Right.
For then a vote. The vote by Foxborough School Committee and the Foxborough Board of Selectmen is what would confirm the appointment to Southeast Regional's Board.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thanks for your due diligence on this, Ryan.
Thank you for those who are helping. All right, then, moving forward. Next up, Municipal Moderation Act. Again, this is a continuation of something we discussed last meeting, and it's nice to have the full committee here, so. And Janet, I want to say thank you so much for including so much of that information into our packet for the, I appreciate the research that went into that. It's a lot of good information. Okay. So, so folks, we want to confirm that Ms. Ladani has offered to continue in that role. It was the feeling of the committee that the procedure, and admin, that the procedure has been working well, and is actually a net benefit for the committee and for admin in the way we've been doing it. So I guess what's left to decide is if we want to continue having Ms. Ladani in that role for the next six months.
I think one of the questions is, do we want to keep the appointment on a six-month cycle? Does that seem appropriate versus longer?
That was the question, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Raymond. That's, that's true.
Because that was what we were trying to determine was, we've approved the process.
Correct.
We don't need to vote again on the process. It's voting on appointing the specific person.
Right.
And right now, we had it on a six-month cycle.
Right.
Does the, I'm sorry, I thought the, I thought it was a review after six months. I sort of assumed it was just, I was appointed, and then you guys would review and just make sure everything was going well. I mean, it's, we, you know, $40 million is a lot of money. I don't want it all on my shoulders. I want to make sure you guys are comfortable with everything.
And I think, I believe the thinking was to have, to have a periodic review built in to give any member on the committee an out, and also to give any other member of the committee an opportunity to, you know, step forward and say that they'd like to fulfill that role.
Can I say something just quick?
Yes.
You actually appointed Sarah. It did say six months.
It did say.
Yep.
Okay.
Right, that's what, going on is.
Okay.
It said, she was appointed for six months.
Right.
With the responsibility to report back. So.
Okay.
That's why I was saying is, do we want it to say six months, or do we want it to say a year? What, how often do we want to be reviewing who is appointed into that position?
I would say, there, there could be some wisdom to six months, because if you do it every six months, you're gonna wind up looping in new members, right? So six months from now, there could be a new member of the school committee that could be elected by this, by this town. And then six months after that, maybe not. But, you know, the six months isn't gonna hurt us as a process, just for us to be attentive to the, to the financial flow. It's not gonna hurt us, and we just, we just, we just block it in. So we decide now, and then we, we make sure we have it on our agenda. Thoughts for September? And then you'll have a new member of the board, you know, just so that they're embracing it.
I appreciate.
It seems to make sense, right?
I appreciate that.
Yeah, I think so. It's not gonna hurt us. And, and I think the process is great. I, I think, I remember distinctly the process of Janet searching and searching and searching for signatures.
Right.
And with no, with no.
Right.
Ill intent of anyone.
No.
Just, we were all going separate angles, right? So I think this is really focused, and even the times, Sarah, when you were unable to do it, we had a solution right away. And, and we planned for it. So it just seems so much easier. And, and the clarity is better. And Bill said this when we decided it, and he's said it since, we're getting better detail now.
We are.
Than we got as a whole.
Agreed.
Because we're all getting it.
Agreed.
So I, I think it's just wise, and I, you know, I would say six months is a good idea. It's prudent, right?
Yeah.
It really is.
I think, can I make a suggestion on that, is because if we say that the appointment is only for six months, then you have, we have to make sure that we are reviewing it every six months, versus saying, we appoint the person, and the appointment would be reviewed, rather than the appointment only lasting for six months. Might be a little bit of a technical, technicality.
No, it's, but it matters.
Right.
But it matters. So you're saying reviewed, right?
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
So if we all agree that Sarah would be appointed, we would just review her appointment. So if for some reason, we don't review it at exactly the six months, she's still in that position, it, it's just.
Doesn't expire, because then the board expires.
So that would then be my question, when do you actually then reappoint? Is there, is that annual? Do we need to add that language and say, you'll appoint this annually, then review it at six months and appoint it annually? Because otherwise, it, does it just go to?
What if we say review for?
I see benefit to both, to both points. You know what I mean? To reappoint every six months, or re, like Rich said, somebody else could be here and say, like, we don't know, you know, and it sheds a light on it, and has, it creates a discussion. I, I don't know, I see benefit to both.
We just have to make sure that it is reappointed every six months, so that there's not a question.
Okay.
Yep.
That's, that's my concern.
Okay.
Is that, you know, when, when it comes up, however that needs to be kept track of, that, and the question may be more, okay, if we're gonna do it now through September, is maybe pick a date and say, it's gonna be as of X date, and it should go on our, our calendar of.
Those monthly.
The monthly kind of calendar, so that it, it makes sense. So rather than right now arbitrarily saying six months, maybe why don't we say it's appointed between now and X date, and then it just becomes part of the routine.
I, I think that's the best idea.
Yeah.
Because I think we should appoint every six months. Otherwise, like I said, I.
Right.
When does it end?
It strings out.
Yes.
So if you say, you know, first meeting after the start of the school year, and then.
February.
You know, last meeting in February, that gives you two dates, and then we just make them permanent agenda items?
Yeah, if you tie it to the meeting, then you know that even if the meeting changes, it's still tied to the meeting. It's tied to our public meeting and our business, our job.
It's great in conjunction with Dr. Berdus's mid-cycle review, you know what I mean? If we said, because it's sort of our mid-cycle, we did it at the same meeting, not tied in, but do you know what I mean? At the same meeting.
Another review.
Exactly. Just one more review.
We could do something like, on or about Feb, on or about August 1st, and on or about February 1st, or something like that. Because we don't know that when the exact dates are always gonna hit, right?
Mm-hmm.
So August 1st would be, you know, fairly soon after we have a new board, a couple months, a couple meetings, like three or four meetings after a new board. And then February 1st is right about now, so. Or September 1, May, March 1. I mean, I'm just, you know, kind of on or about. Is that, is that fair? And I'm okay with appoint, too. I was still okay with reviewed, but fair enough. Yeah, a point's good, too. It just makes us take action and just be thoughtful about it. Is, is it okay? I mean, we don't want to say that's the first meeting. We could say the first meeting of August and the first meeting of February, too, I guess. I just, whatever's easier.
Honest, as long as it happens in that timeframe.
I think the intent is the intent, right?
I want the language, I want the language to work and not be muddled, that's all.
Right. I, I would maybe suggest we do it in September rather than August, because we tend to have a lot on our schedules right before school starts, that it might just make, be better to say the, the first meeting in September, and then.
I think you typically only have one meeting in September, because you have the meeting in August.
Yeah.
Is that?
Right.
There's only one, so the September meeting?
Fine.
And then we tend to have one meeting in February historically as well, because of February vacation. So if you say the September meeting and the February meeting.
That's, that's fine, yeah.
Yeah, or September, March, either one. Yep, yep, whatever one does. Yep.
No, I think having it.
Yep.
So it's very clear that that's when it's gonna be.
Okay.
So it doesn't get dropped. We're gonna have a meeting in September, we're gonna have a meeting in February, the date might move around, but we'll have it, we'll have that one.
That's good. I appreciate codifying it in there and just making it part of how we do business. Thank you for making that possible.
Two, two questions.
Yes.
Do we need to then amend the policy or the process and vote on that? And are we going to then vote on reappointing Sarah for the next six months? Are we making two decisions tonight, or just one?
No, I think because, just looking at how we voted, it wasn't a process, we just voted to appoint her for six months.
Okay.
We might want to retroactively appoint her from the, you know, make sure that we have had her appointed during this whole timeframe, because it has been a little bit longer than six months. So that might be a good thing to vote, to put on the record, to clear any holes.
I thought we did reappoint in, in the fall. It might not have been September, but I thought we did that action in the fall.
We did talk about it once.
But that's okay, and we'd have to.
I don't know if it was officially reappointed or you guys voted. I think we did like a review.
Right. So that's why I would say there's no harm in, in.
Okay.
Kind of tying that knot together.
Okay. Do you want to be the tire?
Okay.
I want you to be the tire, how's that?
Somehow I knew that was coming. So.
Yeah.
I move to reappoint Ms. Ladani as the signer of the warrants from now until the September of 2023 school committee meeting.
That's good.
Second?
All in favor?
Thank you.
500. Congratulations, Ms. Ladani.
Woo-hoo. Look, I won the lottery.
We're not done, we have to back and tie the.
I was just gonna say, you have to do a retroactive motion, right?
Now, I, I move to confirm the appointment of Ms. Ladani as the signer of the warrants from her prior appointment through today.
Yep.
And to report back to the committee, with the responsibility to report back to the committee.
Fair enough.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Again, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Raymond, for your attention. All right, with that done, let's, let's move on to acceptance of donations. We've got a couple, from the IGO Elementary PTO, and then FHS Softball Booster. Who would like to speak to them, if anyone? Thank you, Ms. Raymond.
So the two donations are similar in what they're trying to accomplish. The IGO Elementary PTO approached us a while ago about adding a message board to the front of the IGO. As you know, all the schools at one point had the old style, go out there and put letters up for changes. It wasn't very informative, and it didn't change very often. So a few years back, we did the high school, and then a couple years ago, we did the, the Hearn. I think it's been well-received, because a lot more information gets out to people as they're coming by. So the IGO PTO approached us this year with a similar request. We agreed that we would do a sort of a cost share with it. They came up with $20,000. We will come up with about $10,000, maybe $15,000 in the end. Reason being, we're actually gonna move the sign, too. We're, we're, we've already put the new foundations in, we're moving it further from the road, and a little bit on a better angle, so that it's no more noticeable from South Street as well as from Carpenter Street. And we're also obviously having to electrify it and bring power that way. So we will use the building revolving account, basically, which, you know, has a kind of a, anything around buildings is really allowed to be used for, so it's a good purpose for it. And, and do that, we, so they did donate that $20,000, so that would be the first acceptance.
That's nice. Is there a possible rough timeline that?
Right now, the vendors told us that basically it will be mid to late May, by the time the equipment shuts up.
Better than I thought.
That's great.
That's what I thought, given the climate. Thank you.
Can I?
Please.
Can I make a motion to accept with gratitude the.
Bless you.
The donation from the IGO PTO in the amount of $20,000.
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. All in favor? Accepted with much gratitude, 500. And thank you for all the work went into making that possible.
So the second one actually serves a couple purposes. Obviously, it's a pride issue for the softball team, the girl softball team, to actually have their own scoreboard on their field.
Right.
As you know, years ago, when we renovated all the fields and put the two softball and baseball fields up behind the building, we just moved the existing high school boys sign to the new field, and we never had a girl sign, you know, to address that. It is, to me, somewhat of an issue that I think these, you know, we were, we're a little behind on, because actually, if, when I look at Title IX, we really, it's something that we should be fair and even with. We will put more money into this sign. The school district will put about $25,000 in for the $10,000 that the boosters have already raised and made the donation on. But I think that would bring really, as far as the sports side, up to really kind of the standard it should be at.
Awesome. That's great.
Great.
That's appropriate and appreciated.
In the same timeframe, as far as delivery, unfortunately, it'd be after the season starts, but it may be still in the middle of the season if we're fortunate enough to come in it, so.
Playoffs.
Exactly. Well, and I think that, I think the, the boosters and the, the team and the program are just excited to, just excited to have it. And I think that, that it means a lot, and it's the right thing to do. So thank you so much for your, all the, all the prep on that, Mr. Yuko. Entain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to accept with gratitude the check for $10,000 from the Foxborough, from the Foxborough Softball Boosters.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All those in favor? Accept that, 500, with, again, much gratitude, and it would be nice to have that all in par.
Yeah.
Moving on, other matters, I'll just uncreatively go down the line. Ms. Ladani?
So, all is pretty quiet on the recreation side of things right now. Got another meeting coming up next week. We have the Ties and Tierras Dance, which is always so cute and sweet, and we have wonderful partnership that I'm so very proud of. The National Honor Society and the Community Warriors continue to step up to volunteer for all the good stuff that the Recreation Department's doing around town. All happy stuff.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Nothing, thank you.
I only have one, actually, no, I've got a couple. I want to say, well done on the winter concert to the, the music program. It was lovely and well-attended, and just nice to see. And then, the, the weekend event where they, where they were hosting all the music teachers was also just a really, just a wonderful event.
That's great.
And I'm so happy that they're doing that again, and that's another evidence of them getting back to life as we knew it before 2020, and that's lovely. And the other one is, I'm cognizant of the fact that Mr. Canfield had asked in an upcoming meeting to have a committee discussion of the Foxborough mascot, and that'll appear in a future meeting. But, so this is my invitation to school committee members to forward to me and Janet questions you might have, or if there's information that people can jointly work together ahead of that discussion, so that people are feeling prepared going into it. I'd like for that to happen, and over the, between now and the next meeting, so that when we do put it on the agenda, we can actually have information that people might want ahead of time.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Pearson?
I have nothing. Thank you.
All right.
I have nothing either.
Thank you.
I'll just add, one of the things kind of connects to some of the stuff, Sarah, so but, I just, we had our parent leaders meeting this morning, and those are those in leadership roles for the PTO and the PAC. And it's, it's just, again, a reminder of how much our PTOs and our PAC do for our students. All of the activities that are coming up, when you see the donations, it, in, in just even having those conversations, it just makes you feel really good about the support that they provide, the activities, the enrichment opportunities, and it really makes a difference. So, just a thank you to all of the parents who spend their time in volunteering, and those that make things happen for kids.
Here, 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 here. Dr. Berdus?
Just in that same vein, I, I just wanted to thank all of our community members that had shown up for our vision of a graduate focus groups over the course of last week and, and last evening. It's really a wonderful turnout. People were engaged, committed to the process. It was a, it was a great discussion, so we're really grateful to have so many community members come out and support us in that process.
All right. Mr. Yu, can I add anything?
Yeah, just, Dr. Berdus kind of referenced this, but just so you know, we did have some issues over the cold weekend. We're usually quite diligent on this, and I think we were, but we had some very unexpected freeze-ups. Most of it was at the IGO building, and unfortunately, Dr. Berdus is getting a new office because of that.
Oh, no.
It's not inhabitable at this point. But, the, and we had a small one at the high school within the, the girls locker room, which was an exterior pipe that, between two brick walls, it froze up. So, overall, we did much better than what I'm hearing around. I think Plymouth had two schools totally closed.
That's right.
A number of other buildings are having that type of an issue. But, just the same, it's not something we're kind of accomplished, you know, or, or used to. We, we normally are, get through these things without any issues, but that low temperature really did hit us in a way we couldn't do much about, so. I will say, I, I do want to really thank the, the Facilities Department, because they were here all weekend, and really got things cleaned up, put back together. So, as far as the schools and the teachers were concerned, you know, everything was up and running on Monday without any issues. But, you know, not for them coming in, we wouldn't be there, so.
Thank you. Mr. Yu? Please.
Eight more schoo, eight until break, which is very exciting.
Nathan, you're not counting at all, are you?
Not at all.
No, 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 no. Ms. Grace, anything?
No, sir, thank you.
All right, well, thank you.
Can I add something?
Yeah.
I forgot something, and I, I had it in my mind, but it kind of slipped as it was going by. Last week, I traveled the state in my position, in my job, thanking officials across the state of Massachusetts. So, if you happened to follow me on Twitter, you saw that I was from South Hadley to Nauset and up to Newburyport for a whole week. But, the whole effort was National Officials Appreciation Week across the country, and across the state of Massachusetts, to thank our game officials. And it was a really important week for me and my role, but I think it's an important week for all of us that want to support athletics, not just high school athletics, but, but athletics in our, in our youth sports as well. I, I know for a fact that over the past five to seven years, the country is down 50,000 officials. The state of Massachusetts is down probably about 1,500 officials. So, it's our, it was our effort last week, and across the country, to thank officials for all that they do. And I think it's really important for people to keep their eye on the ball. Sorry for the pun, but to really pay attention to this, because some of the behaviors that, that exist in youth sports and in high school sports are absolutely unacceptable. And, and the reason our kids do this is for the love of the game. So, we, I spent the week thanking officials, and, and side by side, expressing my thanks for them, and asking them to stick with it. But, some, some struggle. So, I just figured I would make a mention here in this opportunity, that we need to, we need to be positive with officials, and, and change the environment of why we do this. Our kids do it for the love of sport.
Right.
They do it because they want to be with their friends. I, I could ask, I could ask Nathan, why you do it, but I, I, I know the answers across the country. And it's not about being a pro athlete, and it's not about winning necessarily, and, you know, and losing. It's about being with their friends, and something they love to do. And that's why the students do it, and I think we should do that as adults. So, just thanking all officials, but let's all keep, keep our eyes on this. Thank you.
Thank you. And also, it's nice to see you at the games, just as it is, Dr. Berdus, as you're out and about. Well, with that, taking it, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Really?
Second.
All in favor? Five oh oh. So, we stand in adjournment until March 7. Thank you.